Cheering from those who are in the room.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the school committee meeting of January 22nd, 2018. First on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of meeting minutes of January 8th, 2018.
Make a motion?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That is a vote, thank you very much. If it's okay with the rest of the committee, I would just like to make a change in order for our agenda this evening. We're hoping to hear our preliminary budget investigation presentation first off this evening, and in the interest of the full crowd of smiling young faces, that we move Curriculum Corner up very next on the agenda right after that. So that being said, we'll turn right over to, under new business, item seven, letter C, the preliminary budget presentation for FY19. Dr. Cron.
Thank you very much. So, I'm gonna walk everyone through the budget. It's gonna come in essentially four sections: salaries, special education, and annual expenses. Then I'm gonna talk about the schools' contributions to offset the cost. I wanna also highlight some regional staffing data, and I also want to discuss and explain revolving funds: what they are, what we have, how we use them. So I'm hoping that that is helpful. So first of all, for FY19, to roll our teacher salaries ahead, we're using 2% as an estimate. We're currently negotiating our contract, but 2% is a safe estimate. And that does include steps and lanes. For those who don't know what steps and lanes are, when you're a teacher, you can increase the amount of your earnings by either getting more education and moving to a higher pay salary. You also move to the right as you work additional years. So when we say "steps and lanes," that is what we're talking about. And the 2.5% increase is being used as an estimate. It's a very good estimate, because we have not done steps and lanes yet for the other units. There are two new positions. Do I have a pointer here? Is it the little green thing? Or is it on the side? I don't wanna touch anything, 'cause I'll... Beautiful, so top, good. So I'm also requesting two new positions for next year: an elementary math coach and a curriculum coordinator or assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction. The curriculum position has been discussed for many years, and I feel that we're at the time, we're at the right time for the organization to do it, and I wanna sort of walk everyone through why I believe that to be the case. This is my second year as superintendent, and I spent a great deal of time last year in the elementary, because I'm essentially a high school person, and everything begins there, and I needed to understand it thoroughly. So I spent a great deal of time there with the principals and the coaches. And what I discovered, at least the term that I kept using was, we had sort of a leadership infrastructure problem. And it came to light when we developed the literacy committee and began to understand some of the things that were keeping us from really achieving what we want to achieve in literacy. So, I'm gonna walk you through what we did. So you have your three elementary schools, and each school obviously has a principal. That smiley face with a P, that's the principal. The principals talk to one another about literacy, and so they try to stay on the same page. But you've got three schools, all doing English Language Arts. Those are your classrooms. So Memorial Park, you literally have three Ks, two firsts, two second, two third, and two fourths. Then at Jefferson, you've got, actually, there are four kindergartens and only two at Aston, but eventually there'll be three, and you didn't want me to have to make 75 more smiley faces. But essentially, those are your classrooms in the three elementary schools, and you have one principal. We have English Language Arts, we have what her official title is... What is your official title?
District Literacy Coach.
Thank you, District Literacy Coach. I'm calling her coordinator, so that you have that term. But Karen McKinnon is the person that, she is our content expert in elementary literacy. She works hand-in-hand with the principals, and they are a team to decide on curriculum and instructional improvements, and also doing data meetings. So what we had was, before this year, we had Ms. McKinnon as our ELA coordinator, working with the principals to reach the classrooms for each one of these classrooms, and Karen was overseeing and in and out of every single one of those classrooms on a regular basis. It was a lot. What we did this year, this year, we added one component. There was a missing piece. There was no one on the ground in the schools to handle the messages that were coming from the teachers, the curriculum needs that they were expressing, and there was just a missing piece, and it was these lead teachers. And we added three of them this year, for a very reasonable amount of money. I believe we paid $1,600 stipend for each one of those three coordinators. This year is a very different year in the Rockland Public Schools because of these three coordinators that we added. It allows Ms. McKinnon to actually do her job and support the principals in a way, because now she has true buy-in from the teachers, because she's able to work with them, and they have someone who's a sounding board. So those lead teachers are taking in information from their colleagues, they're bringing it back to us, and the reverse is true. They're taking in information, these three lead teachers meet with Karen and the principals on a regular basis to look at data. And I will tell you, it is a much better year in the Rockland Public Schools this year, because of this model. Now, we go on to math. We have our three schools. We have our three, what are they?
Principals.
Yeah, that's right. And they're talking to one another, and we have our classrooms, and we have our work from the principals, 'cause they're in charge of everything that happens in their building. And this year, we added lead teachers in math for each of the three schools, and it's made a big difference. But there's no content expert in math. We are currently really lacking a content expert in math. Ms. Forlizzi, our assistant superintendent, used to be that person, and we never replaced her, five, six years ago, seven years ago. So this is why I'm asking for a math coach. We need a content expert, we need someone who can do... Someone who can make these connections for us, and really dial up the level of response to testing. So testing is great, but if you don't do anything with the results, it's a waste of time. So you need a content expert like Karen. She's very in touch with what are the newest trends, what's going on, what are people using, and her expertise is used to help the principals and help the teachers get better. We need the same in math. The next position I've asked for is Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and this is why. So now you have your five schools, and you have your five principals, and you have your classrooms, and your lead teachers in Jefferson and Aston. And at the middle school, you've got a hybrid. They're a little different. You've got, they're grouped by grades, but they're also beginning to be more departmental. So you have a science lead, you have a history, you have an ELA lead, and you have a math lead. But it's really more of a department head structure. When you get to the high school, it becomes very department-oriented, because you have 10th graders taking senior classes, you have some seniors who might jump and take a sophomore class that they need, and so on and so forth. So it's a much different sort of leadership structure. You have department heads. And you have all of these folks reporting essentially to me. And I work in this role, and have worked in this role as curriculum coordinator, and I love that role. But I think with the structures we have in place now at the elementaries, it's time for us to make that next step, to hire that curriculum coordinator who would be responsible for curriculum, instruction, and assessment. So this person would oversee K to 12, our alignment, our goals, our intended outcomes, and he or she would work with the principals, with the curriculum coordinators, to design professional development, and so on and so forth. And that person would help tie all that together. And that's why I feel we need these two positions. So now I'll just jump back into the presentation. The second big component of our budget is special education. This is your FY18 numbers with about a 2% increase, $2,785,338. It's a very volatile part of our budget. Last year, again, October 1st, we had a $750,000 increase, unanticipated from move-ins. So special education is always volatile. Our annual expenses, these are anything from legal and business to student activity accounts, athletics, $296,000. I'm gonna come back to that number, because athletics is a great example of a revolving fund cost that is truly funded primarily by the school. So we collect approximately $60,000 a year in receipts from athletics. That's user fees, that's gates, the whole nine yards, but we spend...
$296,000?
Yeah, we spend $296,000. So that means that the district is paying, you know, the vast majority of our athletic fees, which is fine, and it's as it should be. The same thing goes for buses, but I just kinda want everyone to understand. I put the VOTAC in the Norfolk Aggie at the bottom here, $2,156,235. That is the agreed-upon number that we have with the town. And I have the little blue asterisks there, because when we go forward, we're gonna retain some, get some of that money back. Now, this is the amount, all of these items here are either coming from state or federal grants. Circuit Breaker is actually a grant, but I put it separate, because it's something, it's money that needs to be used each year. And then our revolving funds. We have revolving funds, I'm gonna go into detail on that in a little bit. But we plan to contribute $814,932 of revolving funds to next year's budget. Circuit Breaker, we plan to spend $600,000, and again, you have to spend, you have to at least spend the previous years revolving before you move ahead. So the total contribution from grants, circuit breaker, revolving accounts is $2,607,932. So if you skip down here, our total request for budget for next year for FY19 is $27,063,432. When you subtract the FY19 budget, the 18 budget from the 19 budget, we are asking for an increase of $1,256,724, which is approximately 4.9% over the previous year. And when you hear 4.9%, back of my mind says, nobody ever gets a 4.9% raise. It's not a raise. It's nearly, I would say, 3, 3.5% just to roll over salaries. So I hesitate to throw around percentages when you're talking about what you're asking for as an increase, because it's misleading. No one ever gets a 4.9% raise, but it's not a raise. Okay. The point I wanna make with this slide is that 73.5% of our budget is salary. And I think people need to understand that. There is not a lot of discretionary funds flying around. We need every person that we have to work with our students. And then our special education part of our budget is volatile. Now, when I put that kind of number up and say salaries, then someone should say, 'cause I always say, "Do we have too many teachers? Are we paying, are we hiring too many teachers?" So I just looked, these are some of our neighbors. So our student-to-teacher ratio in FY2017, we had the highest of the five that I'm showing you. We have Avington, Hanover, Braintree, and then the state average. So our per student-to-teacher ratio is higher, is obviously the highest of all five. So we don't have too many teachers. And I can break this out 75 ways to Sunday, this is just one way to look at it. But again, this is right on the website, right on DESI website, anybody can pull this up. Our average teacher salary, 'cause you might say, "Well, you're just paying them too much." We're not paying them too much. Our median salary FY16 is the latest data that the state has collected and posted, so that's why I'm using FY16. But our average teacher salary is $74,500, and the state average is $76,442. So we are right in the middle. That's pretty much where we are, we're right in the middle. I'd say a little bit below average, but we are not overpaying and we are not overstaffed. The next thing that is often asked about is, when you talk about budget, is revolving funds. What is in a revolving account? So a revolving fund, and this is directly from the Mass Department of Revenue, a revolving fund is something that a school or a municipality can set up that is not a part and not a specific light item in the budget that is voted. So student activities, so if you're a member of the art club and you sell chicken, and you sell 75 chickens, and you make $125, and some in cash and some in checks, well, it all gets deposited into a student activity account. So we need those kind of accounts, because there are many things like that going on. But it's not just for student activities. We also have one for busing, we have one for special education, we have a number of student activity accounts. And so some people look at our budget sheets and say, "Wow, the school has nearly $2 million in these revolving accounts, why aren't they spending it?" We're not spending it, because it's not ours to spend, and I'll show you exactly what we have. These are our revolving accounts. I put, we currently have, I think, 13 revolving accounts. The ones that are highlighted in yellow, we have quite a bit of discretion as to how we use those accounts. So those accounts, we have quite a bit of discretion. WRPS, we don't tell Mr. Murphy how to spend his money. Youth Commission, we don't tell them how to spend their money. Donation account, daycare, cafeteria. So what I'm putting up here, this is 2017, this is what we took in, that's what we put out. The reason I'm showing you two years is that these are very fluid accounts, okay? Revolving funds fluctuate with demand. So if you look here at, what's a good one to look at? Facility rental, okay? So in 2017, we took in $106,844 in facility rental, but we expended $234,371, because our buildings are old and they cost money, okay? But if you go back to facility rental the previous year, we took in $103,356, and we only spent $61,000. So my point for showing you this is, number one, it differs from year to year based on what we need and what we're doing. And these are not just giant slush funds that we can do anything we want with. So I just need everyone to understand that. Our revolving account books are wide open, anyone can call me, make an appointment, I will show you how they're spent, why the balances are what they are. You could look at a balance for facility rental at this, actually, a better one would be cafeteria. You could say, you might see that we have $1 million in the cafeteria revolving account. In May, it'll be $100,000. And we need to have certain amounts of money, especially in special education, because we never know what's gonna happen. Tomorrow, two families could move in that cost $400,000 to educate their children. We have no way to know that. And if that happened, and we don't have this money, then we have to go back to the town and have a special meeting to ask for more money, and I'll get fired. Just throwing that out there. That is the entire budget presentation. And I'm very excited about it.
Doctor, I'd like to mention one thing, being somewhat of a historian here, as I've been around maybe too long, but I don't know. We are very, very, you mentioned teachers and the ratios. We are extremely light on administration. That happened way back in Proposition Two and a Half, some of you may remember when that came in. But at the time, there were many cuts made in the system. A lot of cuts were made in administration, and we've never picked them up again. And one of them was an assistant superintendent. Many schools in the area will have two or three assistant principals within their schools, whereas we don't. I think we have, what, one at the high school, and I don't think there are any at the elementaries. So that we are very light. So when you mentioned bringing in these two positions, one particularly with curriculum, where our elementary schools are spread out, and sometimes communication could be a problem with three principals, and making sure that all three curriculums line up with the curriculum as they move into the middle school, that is a very delicate thing, I feel. And that has not been addressed, I will say it hasn't been addressed. It's been addressed, but I would feel a lot better with someone having that direct responsibility. So I agree with you that that position is sorely, has been sorely missing, and I think it would be a great, great improvement into our school system.
The literacy committee really brought that to light. At the end of the day, are the teachers frustrated?
Yeah.
Do the teachers have what they need? Do the teachers feel confident in their ability to serve the kids? The literacy, the teachers were upset last year. They weren't upset with anyone other than the fact that they felt like they could not, they weren't providing what they wanted to provide. And when I unpack it, I saw there's a communication law. Karen cannot serve, Karen cannot be in all of these classrooms and work with the principals and work with me. And that one link has made a tremendous difference, and I know the same will happen with math. And then it's time to really tie in the middle school and high school. So I agree.
In preparing this presentation tonight, we do this every year at school committee, we have a preliminary budget presentation, and it's always been done very well, both by Dr. Cron and his predecessor. But in preparing for this one, we talked about having Dr. Cron do it in a way that was very simple and very easy to understand and unpack, because when you look at a school's budget, it's very difficult to understand the whole thing, to many of the items that you were talking about, about how revolving funds can and cannot be used. And if a layperson were just to look at the balance sheet and to see all this money in particular accounts, they may wonder why the school's sitting on so much money. So I think that you did a very effective job in unpacking all of this, and being able to show it in a very simple and effective way. This may be the most important initiative that this committee and that Rockland Schools and maybe, I think, the town of Rockland has in the next several years, is building a sustainable school budget. There have been a lot of economic and economy challenges in the past, why we haven't been able to fulfill certain positions, as Dick had mentioned earlier about administration. And I think it's about time that we get caught up with where we need to be with staffing, even though you compared very well different towns. I think that there is sometimes a misconception that maybe we are overstaffed or that we are overhired, but clearly, it is really the opposite of that. Rockland Schools has been very, very responsible in hiring and in contract negotiations, and we've managed to do very well in that regard in the past. So thank you for really outlining all of that, and I think it's really important for not only this committee, but for all in the room, and anybody out there in TV land, all six of them who might be watching this. But the good thing to know is that this budget presentation is gonna be available on WRPS, on the internet out there, on YouTube and on the WRPS channel, so that folks can be able to listen to this and kind of understand what the schools are asking for coming into this budget year. And we moved it up to the beginning of tonight's presentation, so that I think everyone could hear it tonight, and that down the road, when it's out there in social media land and online, that people can get right to it and really understand what's going on here in Rockland Public Schools and what our needs are going down the road in the future. So was that any other comments or questions from the committee on tonight's first reading of the budget?
No, I mean, I think if you want the schools to be successful, you have to have the right infrastructure, and it sounds like this has just been an ongoing process to get the right infrastructure, so it sounds like it's what we need and what our kids need.
Very good. Well, that being said, this is the first reading of the budget. With that being said, shall we take a vote on it tonight? You looking for a vote tonight?
Nope.
Or would you like us to table it tonight?
No, it's fine.
Okay. So with that being said, really entertain a motion to table the budget, and a second? All those in favor? That is a vote, thank you very much. Now, a close second to, a close second favorite thing I have at school committee meetings to hearing about budgets, is being able to hear from our kids and being able to be in the presence of our kids and our teachers and seeing what's going on in our building and the great things that our kids are learning about and the things they're doing in our schools. And we get to hear about that monthly in our Curriculum Corner piece. We've asked again to move this piece up to the front of tonight's meeting, so that all these gentlemen and ladies don't have to be with us throughout the meeting. Not that you don't want to, I know this is exciting stuff, just. But tonight, we have with us the Memorial Park Grade Four, and they're gonna be telling us about the Being a Better Writer program. So Jan, I think that you and the crew are here. Welcome.
So thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you for being here.
We are going to present on being a writer, and that was some of the work that was done in the literacy committee. They looked at our student writing and found that that was something that we really needed to work on, and in fourth grade, we piloted the program, Being a Writer, and they're gonna tell you their successes this year. So we have with us tonight Mrs. Squattrito, fourth grade teacher, and Mrs. McGrath, a fourth grade teacher, and Mrs. Blake could not be here tonight with us, since she's home with three little ones and her husband has a new job in Boston, she just couldn't make the time. So here are our students, and the teachers will introduce them, and they will share their work. Thank you.
Can I just tell everybody what you're gonna do?
I'm Candy.
I'm Megan.
I'm Andrew.
I'm Yara.
I'm Kylie.
So we're here to talk to you about being a writer, but I'm sure you'd rather hear from the writers in the room than us, so as much as you love being a writer, each of our student writers is going to tell you why they love it.
The thing I have to most about being a writer is being able to write anything I want. You can give me any topic if I'm allowed to.
I love being a writer, because you can release your thoughts on two pieces of paper. Two personal narratives doesn't make you that. You can write a journal if you just have others you're starting, just to be creative.
This is what I like about being a writer, first, the excerpts from the text. The excerpts are from books we have written in class, and I also like making thrilling fictional stories and also the true nonfiction pieces.
I enjoy the story that we read before we do the writing, for an example of the author's writing style. I also enjoy writing whatever I want.
I like being a writer, because it lets me be creative. I also like it, because I get to write about things that are important to me and things that have happened.
So the two main focus areas in writing, we each, in pre-writing, drafting, revising, proofreading, and publishing, which is their final product. And we've been writing, so far, we've done personal narratives, and they just finished a fiction of the kids. And so each of the writers brought their writer's notebook, which is like such an important part of the program, using every single day. So they will share those with you, just hand them to anybody over there, if you need to walk over them. And feel free to browse through them, see some of the things. You'll see quick writes, you'll see full drafts, you'll see lists, you'll see ideas.
What's your name?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Want to tell me about it?
Yeah.
Okay. So first of all, the pictures.
Yeah, these are some pictures that I got to bring in, these pictures, and we could decorate it.
That's very cool. Okay, so show me some.
This is like, this is me and my family, we're in New Jersey, this is my screen of mommy. This is me and my best friend, these are Pokemon.
Very cool. I think he likes that one. All right, so tell me what's happening in here.
This is my first writing.
Did you need a book for you?
My teacher was helping us write about playing. And we created stuff, we created a lightsaber, and we would tell like...
Is that like something?
Yeah, and Star Wars, and it was like, how it feels, how it looks, and like, how the people...
So you flew down to Disney? Were you nervous?
That's important.
And then why does this one?
This is Tennessee. This is...
You're a novelist, right? Huh? Get a window? You there?
I'm in the summer. This is a writing, a whole story, with the school. We reflect on it.
Oh, so you read it?
Yeah. So how it, what, how it reflects on it.
Did you have family there?
That's why they're pretty old. Ah? We love this. I don't know.
You get to read what you wrote, but every time you sit down, you get to read something. You're reading what exactly you did. It's pretty cool, right? Maybe someday you can write a book like that for kids like you do.
Oh, very cool. Now, do make a painting upstairs yourself.
Grantor.
Oh, very good, that's cool.
Old Leo.
And then you talk about it?
This is this?
Oh, sorry, okay. That is very cool.
I live in Tennessee this year.
Was it fun?
Yeah.
You're not seven, no?
And this is like Betsy Byers, one of the...
They've already...
Oh, did you go? Is that fun?
Yeah.
That's very cool.
I like it, yeah.
That's what I was...
Thank you very much.
Very cool, you like your Nina?
Yeah. It's like what I learned, and like, if you're my assistant, maybe not that.
Oh, that's very true.
Oh, very good. That's cool. And then, and you talk about it? Oh, sorry. That is very cool. Oh, was it fun?
Yeah.
You're not seven, no?
And this is like Betsy Barnes.
Oh, did you go? Is that fun? That's very cool.
I like it. Yeah. Thank you very much.
What, you like your Nina? Let's see that.
It's like what I learned, and like if you're my assistant, maybe not that.
Oh, that's very true. Okay, I think we've got to wrap this up.
The other really large parts of it is creating a real writing community in the classroom. So they're not just giving them a slide, and they sit down and write by themselves. Trying to make a whole community where they have a lot of partnering and sharing and learning how to critique one another in a positive way. So they're each going to tell you what they like about having a writing community in the classroom. Anderson over there.
I love being a writer.
Oh, okay. Amy, you go ahead and start.
What I like about the writing community is that you have a writing partner. I love this because before your final draft, you can edit a lot better because your partners are there. They are able to tell you to add something or add or remove unneeded information.
I love being able to have a writing partner. They are so nice, and if they need to critique you, they say it in the kindest way possible. And this makes the writing community even better. You get to read your story to them, and they always give you positive comments back.
I enjoy being a part of the writing community because I can share my pieces with other people, and they will give back feedback. They will tell me what I should add in or what I should change to make it better or less confusing to the reader.
Being in a writing community helps me because my friends and my writing partner give me feedback on what I can do better. It also helps me because it teaches you how to work with your classmates.
I like being in a, in a writing community because sharing is one of my alternate favorite things. And I like being able to share a piece that I have worked on. Also, I think I like Think, Pair, Share because you're asked a question, and you tell your partner thoughts that you have about this question. It is fun to have a partner to do this with.
So we thought we'd just briefly go through a typical day in being a writer. There are certain routines that we go through almost every day. And one of the most important parts of our being a writer routine is our mentor texts, which some of our writers have already mentioned. Many, many lessons begin with a mentor text that lets us study expert writing. It gives us things to talk about with our partners, like as been mentioned with a Think, Pair, Share. And a couple of our students have brought their favorite mentor texts, and we're going to tell you a little bit about it.
Oh, Nina's an amazing story. The author Jane Moon did an amazing job describing the snow, the trees, and the sands. And that is because one part of the story is that there was no wind, the trees stood still as giant statues. And the moon was so bright, the sky seemed to shine. When you read it, it can remind you to use sensory techniques.
The thing I like the most about the author Alan Day is that he doesn't only tell the story, he tells about what happens in Japan. And writing, this story helps me describe anything. So when I'm writing, I know to not only write about the story, but to think outside the box.
And every day, students have ample writing time. Many times, they are asked to choose a topic and write about whatever they want. It's rare that we give them a specific writing assignment, which I think, as they've mentioned before, and would probably tell you many, many times, they really appreciate. So they spend a lot of time writing every day. During that time, we get to meet with individual students, or we get to meet with partners and facilitate partner conferences. And towards the end, students every day have time to reflect on their writing. So this may be talking with their partner about what they did well in writing today, setting goals with their partner for the following day. Or sometimes our reflections towards the end are really about the social attractions. What did you do to be a good partner today? What can you do to be a better partner tomorrow? Or what did your partner do that was awesome today? And these are some, I mean, great teaching practices in general, but they're particularly emphasized in being a writer. Many times in a lesson, students are asked to turn and talk to keep them engaged in what we are learning. And a big favorite is definitely Think, Pair, Share. So Anderson mentioned this, and this is a way that students are given time to process a question, silently thinking about their answer, coming up with the way that they want to say it first, then getting to share with their partner. And then a few students in the classroom will share out what their partner's thoughts were, or maybe we will pick and choose a few to share for them. And pair conferencing throughout the time, we give them different questions maybe, or time with their particular writing of the day. And they are partnered up, and we try to do very random partners, so they're not comfortable, it's not like they're their best friends. Sometimes they may be. And we change the partners up quite often, so they learn how to interact with the different students in the classroom. And this helps evolve their partnerships. They critique one another, they give positive feedback, and then they are given time to take that feedback, go back to their writing time, and they address whatever their partners had suggested to them. And share time, Carrie just explained, students get to share their work with us. So some share time is us, the teachers directing it with questions, and other times it is them actually sharing their writing, whether it's a published piece that they've worked all the way through, they've edited, revised, and then we sit in the author's chair, and we share out to the classroom. And part of it is also learning to be a great listener and how to ask questions and give helpful feedback. So Kira has chosen a short piece of hers that she will share with us.
Going to see Stronger. Yay, pizza for dinner. I ate two slices of delicious cheese pizza and a lot of french fries. Oops, I almost forgot, four super cheesy mozzarella sticks. They're my favorite. I was so excited to finally go see the new movie that I'm in, Stronger. Mom invited some of her friends that I know to come see the movie with us. I couldn't bring any of my friends because it's rated R. We went to AMC and met the other people that were coming. For a snack, I got a cherry slushy, a boxing junior mitts, and I stole a handful of my dad's popcorn. Then we went into the theater and watched the movie. When we came out of the theater, we were blinded by the light. I really enjoyed going to see Stronger, and we said we would buy 20 copies when it came out of the theater. Then we finally went home.
And these are just some other examples of published pieces. So we publish our writing in different ways depending on the unit. Some of the ones on the left are individual stories, and sometimes we compile them into a class book. And these are available in our classroom libraries throughout the year so that students can go back and enjoy each other's stories throughout the year, which I see my students doing all the time, picking up a classmates' book, enjoying it during independent reading time. And if there are any questions for our lovely writers, we'd be happy to answer them.
I'm curious, how long, how much time in the classroom each day do you spend doing this?
Approximately an hour.
Really?
From us starting the lesson and through their independent writing time.
Forty-five minutes in an hour. And of that time, I'd say on a given day, between 30 and 45 minutes of that is them
sustained writing.
They all seem to love it too. There's a lot of energy there.
They are very excited about it.
That's great.
It offers a lot more. Their favorite subject this year. Yeah. It offers a lot more than what we were using last year. And we see it in our students, that they're that much more excited and becoming better writers.
That's great.
Not so much a question, but more a comment. I really enjoy the sort of wholesale approach to the writing process that being a writer brings, right from the conceptualization of these kids' creative ideas to kind of the collaborative nature of them working together and helping them develop and sharpen the work that they've done, to being able to express it then to their peers as well and be able to verbalize it and, you know, be articulate young guys and girls like they were tonight. So it really is an impressive process and approach to it. And I can see that you've got some great, you brought great examples tonight of how well it's working. You guys, the guys and girls did a really, really great job. Any other comments or questions?
I was going to say, I'm impressed. I don't know what you were using before, but in, you know, in addition to just the writing skills, clearly this program is preparing these kids with life skills. So they're working on their teamwork, their confidence, learning how to take feedback and, and kind of adjust to it. Public speaking, it's a shared experience among them. So I think this is really impressive, and I love it for as much of the life skills that it's teaching them as much as the, the actual writing. So I'm impressed.
Great job.
Bravo.
Great job.
Thank you.
So for all our young authors and writers, I know you're very, very interested in the Rockland School Committee and its goings on, and you're welcome to stay with us all night, but I'm sure you have better things to do. So you're welcome to head home with your parents. And by the way, all you parents, I'm sure you're very proud of these kids. Did a great job tonight. Thank you all for being with us very, very much. Next up on tonight's agenda, under communications, we have a request from the Rockland Special Education Parent Advisory Committee for some flyer distributions. Dr. Cron, do you have some recommendations?
I recommend we approve the flyers.
Outstanding. That being said, do we have a motion?
Two motions, yeah.
Two motions?
Two seconds.
Two seconds? All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda, item three is our superintendent's report. Dr. Cron.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Couple exciting things. We have a national, national champion in, as a sophomore at Rockland High School, sophomore Oliver Riera placed first in the nation over the weekend in the Rubik's Cube Speed Two by Two Competition.
Wow.
He did it in 5.8 seconds. This competition, I surfed around a bit on the internet. This is, this happened, happens in every state around the nation. And Oliver's name is just there, prominent, right at the top, number one in the nation, 5.8 seconds. So congratulations to Oliver. That's amazing. I'd also like to congratulate Rockland High School's Images Magazine. They were selected to receive a, a rating of excellent in the 2017 NCTE. That's the National Council of Teachers of English program, and they, they recognize excellent student literary magazines. So the, the purpose of this program is to recognize excellence in student literary magazines and to encourage all schools to develop these types of magazines, inspiring excellence in writing and school-wide participation in production. For anyone who's seen Images Magazine, it is truly an excellent publication, and I congratulate the students and the school. It's, it's a great, great honor for them to receive. Little update, the Rockland Elementary Building Committee met this past week on Thursday, January 18th. We, on the same day, we filed our RFS, or Request for Services. We are putting out basically a job posting to the state for, to hire an owner's project manager. And it was, again, submitted on January 18th and is currently being reviewed by the MSBA. We should hear shortly whether or not it's been accepted, and then it will be widely distributed and available publicly. And that's all I have tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Cron.
Thank you.
In keeping with our theme tonight of having outstanding examples of Rockland Public Schools' young people here, we've got some great older people here with us tonight. We have with us, from receiving the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award, we have Mr. Ronan McNally tonight with us. And also, we have for the Massachusetts Secondary School Administrators Association Student Achievement Principals Award, we have Aiden, Mr. Aiden Glennon with us tonight. So we'd like to welcome both of those gentlemen up.
Excellent.
Dr. Cron.
Yeah, and Dr. Harrison? Hello.
Hi.
See ya. Hey. All right, I'm going to start by recognizing Ronan. Gives me great pride to present the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award to Ronan McNally. Ronan is a senior, I can't believe he's a senior, I don't know how that happened, who has performed exceptionally well academically. Ronan is currently a member of the National Honor Society and has earned honor roll every term. He's an advanced placement scholar, having performed successfully in these college-level courses. He has taken 11 advanced placement courses. Last spring, at the Underclassmen Award Ceremony, Ronan received the Grade 11 Overall Outstanding Academic Achievement Award. In addition to his academic success, Ronan is a founding member of the School Environmental Club. He has helped bring recycling to Rockland High School, and he spoke at Envirothon last spring in Lincoln on water and soil conservation and agriculture. He's participated in Harvard Model Congress and mock trials, and recently performed in the Shakespeare Festival as Hamlet. He was also the main character in the fall play Moon Over Buffalo. He has found time to compete athletically on the soccer and tennis teams, and he works at Wyman's Nursery and has been recognized as a Rockland High School top dog. He plans to pursue a career in the fields of mathematics or science. On a personal note, I will say I have never, never enjoyed more watching a young man come into a school and just take it by storm. Ronan is a force. I am very excited to see and hear about what you do in the future. I'm very, very, very pleased and honored to have been able to work with you, even though unfortunately from a distance. So congratulations. Thank you. Do you want to stay up? And then we'll do a picture after. Do you want to? Sure. Okay.
I'm taller.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Gives me great pleasure tonight to recognize Aiden Glennon as the recipient of the Massachusetts School Administrators Association Principals Award. Aiden was recently inducted into the National Honor Society last spring for his outstanding scholarship, leadership, character, and service to the Rockland community. He's an honor roll student who received the highest academic award in pre-engineering and robotics this past spring at our Junior Awards Ceremony. Aiden has enrolled in six advanced placement courses, and his teachers really praise his work ethic, his academic drive, and his curiosity. He's involved actively in our community. He's been involved with student government. Previously, he served as class president and executive board member. He's also been a three-sport varsity athlete, competing in golf, basketball, and baseball. And it's very impressive because he's exceptional in all three. He's actually the captain of the basketball and golf team, and I'm guessing he could be captain for baseball as well. Even today, he has basketball practice at 6:30. He was willing to come in, get this award, and miss out basketball practice. And if anybody knows Mr. Damon, you know, that doesn't always go so well, but now Mr. Damon's great with it because the team values education, really because of Aiden's leadership. He's also performed in the Shakespeare Festival as Banquo and Macbeth. And he really enjoys also volunteering as a basketball coach for the town of Rockland. He's also been a top dog, and he plans to pursue a career in engineering. So it gives me great pride to present Aiden with the Massachusetts School Administrators Association Principals Award.
Do you want to do a picture?
Please.
Okay.
Where are we going?
I don't know, just like we rehearsed it.
I'll be on the left.
Okay.
Come on around this side.
Why don't you?
The front.
All right, here we go. I'll go in the middle. Why don't you come in the middle? There you go. We'll stand like this.
Call people.
So work.
One, two, three. One more please.
Lean in.
A, B, C. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
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 Ronan, congratulations.
Congratulations.
So being on the school committee for the last four years, it's really, has been quite impossible not to get to know a little bit about these two gentlemen from afar. This is not the first time they've been here before us. They've been before us on several previous occasions, both for their personal accomplishments and making presentations for the committee. And boy, these guys have been impressing all along throughout their four years. And we've been very lucky as a school district to have representatives like these two young guys, Mr. Glennon and Mr. McNally, representing us here in our schools. I got to meet Mr. McNally, kind of a little funny side story, at his place of work a few years back, at Wyman's Nursery in Hanson. And we didn't know at the beginning that both of us Rockland guys. I shared with him that I too used to work there when I was his age, growing up, stacking wood and spreading peat moss and doing all the things that you do there, working in a garden center. And I've gotten to watch his high school career a little bit since. a little bit since, so I'm really happy for you. I'm really excited for your future. Your parents should be very, very proud of you. And Mr. Glennon, I've had the chance to watch him from afar and from a close in his athletic career and his academic career, and such a great guy to watch on our athletic fields and courts. And, Dr. Cron, is there any way we can put in a special request with Mr. Damon so that Mr. Glennon doesn't have to do additional sprints for not being there with the team tonight?
We can try, but I don't think.
It might not, it might not go through.
Yeah, he'd probably reject our proposal.
I understand. You may be right there. Any other comments from the committee?
No, ditto, except I didn't work at Wyman's. But I've enjoyed seeing you at different places throughout your high school career, and I just wish you so much good. And I don't think you need those wishes. I think you're gonna be fine. I really do.
I would say, just listening to the presentation about both of these young men, it's just impressive, all that they've accomplished and all that they've done. And they clearly have very bright futures ahead of them. And again, I agree, you don't need our well wishes, but I do wish you the same, just the best of successes in the future because you clearly deserve them. So, you're just impressive and excellent representations of what all of our community can be. So, thank you.
And I think a nice dichotomy tonight, having our curriculum corner a little bit earlier with some young fourth graders here. And I almost wish that we had had them be able to see this.
Yeah.
Because for us, it really shows us what we hope these young kids can be. And I wish kind of that we had thought to have these young kids be able to hear a little bit about you and see themselves and their futures and see what they can be someday. So, great job. Kudos to you. Great job, parents, and good luck to you guys in your futures. We'll look forward to seeing you on graduation day. Thank you very much. Great. Okay, up next, item five under reports. We have financial reports for the months of November and December. We have five reports to approve tonight. We have the school department. We have the high school student activities. We have the middle school student activities. We have cafeteria, and we have daycare. So, we'll be looking for five motions for approval.
Five motions.
Five seconds.
And we have five seconds. All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much. Next up, under monthly reports for the months of November and December, we also have reports to approve. In this case, we have 18 reports, including art, athletic, computer technology, daycare, deans, English 5 to 8, 9 to 12, family consumer science and technology, health, physical education, math 5 to 8, 9 to 12, music, radio, TV station, science, social studies, special education, middle school, and foreign language. So, we'll be looking for 18 motions for approval.
Eighteen motions, but with a comment too, that I'm totally impressed, every time we get these reports, with the detail that's in them. The IT thing, Ms. Holyo's report, all these people, it shows they put in so much time, and it's such a help. I mean, we don't get in the classroom. So, to see what is going on in the detail which they explained it, it's really impressive. And I just want to thank the different people that are involved in supplying us with these reports.
I second that, absolutely. And I hope that they know that these are read. They're not only read, but as Mr. Phelps just pointed out, appreciated, not only the work that goes into them, but for us on a committee, for us to be able to read them and understand what's going on in our schools and keep up to date with information. And to have it be so detailed and well put together is really, really appreciated. So, great point, Mr. Phelps.
You need a second.
And we do need a second.
I will second.
Eighteen seconds.
Eighteen seconds.
And a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, under old business, we have some completed fundraisers, and we have some successful ones. We have, from the Rockland High School Service Learning, they had a Savers Drive, which raised $851.20. The Rockland Middle School PAC had gift card sales, which netted $634.96. The freshman class had a rap fest, rapping, W-R-A-P fest, that raised $55. The Music Boosters had a canceled event that was a prize calendar. The Esten PAC had two events, one that was canceled and one that was Scripps that raised $516. The Rockland High School Athletic Boosters had a TV raffle that raised $4,000 to $165. That's outstanding. And lastly, the Class of 2020 sold sweatshirts that raised them $690. So, great work by all on the fundraising. That is absolutely outstanding work. And next up, we have a request for approval of new fundraisers. And I seem to be missing my page. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. We have new fundraisers. We have Rockland High School looking for fundraisers. For the Hockey Boosters, looking for two fundraisers, the Dogs Dash and the Meat Raffle, the Dog Dash being in June and the Meat Raffle in February. Rockland High School's also, the Fitness Club is going to be having a Lift-a-thon in February. Sped Department is going to be having a Sped PAC toll booth in May, and the Rockland Middle School PAC is going to be having a silent auction in June. So, we'll be looking for votes of approval on all three items, and we'll be looking for three motions.
Three motions.
Three seconds.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
And I'd just like to say, getting back to the budget presentation, and you mentioned athletics and the revolving fund, groups like the Hockey Boosters, they need to be complimented and appreciated because I would wonder if we could have a hockey program without the thousands of dollars that they raise throughout the year to plug into that program to, as we know this year and last year, what great success we're having with that program. And thanks to the Boosters and all the other groups that raised this money to supplement our budget.
True doubt. And it also speaks to the youth programs. They don't get to the high school unless they have a youth program, so I agree.
Thanks, Ron.
Well said. Thank you very much. Next up tonight, under item seven, letter B, we have Being a Writer and Making a Meaning presentation from Ms. McKinnon, our literacy coach. Welcome, Ms. McKinnon.
Thank you. Okay, so I wanted to update everybody on where we stand with our literacy program review as part of the work of the literacy committee this past year. So, just to give you a little bit of history, you have a cover sheet in your packet that talks about how, and Dr. Cron had alluded to this a little bit when he spoke about, we began probably three or four years ago, working with the State Department of Education through a grant for the Massachusetts Tiered System of Support, MTSS. And this is where the work first started with us, really looking at our literacy program and starting to analyze and look at data and figure out how we could make some improvements. The work of this grant is what brought us to the Personaging Fundations that we now have through the elementary schools at K-2. We're in our second year of implementation, and we are in grade, for grade three, we're in our first year of implementation. So, we brought in this program based on this work of the MTSS Literacy Academy. And not only did we bring in the program, but we brought in a lot of professional development. The committee and all the work that we did through this grant, it just came to light how important that piece is. You can put a resource, a tool in somebody's hand, but if you don't really take the time to work on how to best implement it, it's not going to be as successful as possible. So, then we developed a literacy committee, and we did present to you guys last year so you know a little bit about where we stand. But we had gone through a data analysis and a complete program review of what we were doing at the elementary schools. And the data really shows that we've been making some slow gains over the past six years. And although it's a little bit early to see significant gains from foundations where we're in early implementation, the preliminary results are pretty positive. I feel like we're moving in the right direction. The committee still feels really strongly that we need a more structured approach, or structured resource for our ELA instruction, as well as additional professional development to support our teachers. So, after this realization came to light through the literacy committee, we started to do some research. And there's really two pathways to look at when we're researching literacy programs and what's available out there. And one is the balanced literacy approach, and the other would be what's called a comprehensive program approach. So, the balanced literacy approach is what Rockland has been implementing over the past seven years. There was much positive feedback that the committee brought about this instructional approach. But without having a publisher-created program, there was a heavy burden of planning and developing curriculum on the teachers in addition to the implementation of the instruction. And the committee also had some real concerns about horizontal and vertical alignment with what we were currently doing. The comprehensive program will alleviate the burden of planning and instruction, and it will also address the alignment issues. But as the committee began researching programs, it kind of became apparent to us that if we published a comprehensive program, there would be a lot of overlap with what we were currently doing. So, I had that little chart that's in your packet that talks about the five areas of literacy development. So, when you're looking at literacy instruction, you want to make sure that you're hitting these five big areas: phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension, and then also you need a writing component. So, when we adopted foundations, we really took care of the phonemic awareness, the phonics, and the fluency piece. Those are incorporated really heavily into the foundations program. We still were lacking something in vocabulary and comprehension. That's why you see the two blanks on the grid. And then, we needed something with writing. The Being a Writer program that you got to hear about today by everybody's thoughts is fitting the need. There's nobody who doesn't think that that's the right direction to go in for our writing program. So, then we're looking at really just needing to fill the gap in vocabulary and comprehension. So, if we were to purchase a big, entire comprehensive program, we would peel off the phonemic awareness, the phonics, the fluency, and the writing piece. We'd be purchasing something really large and only using two pieces. So, that led the committee to really look at, all right, what can we get that will fill these gaps, these two holes? And so, Being a Writer has a reading counterpart called Making Meaning. And then, Lucy Hawkins is also another well-known curriculum program that would have units of study for reading and writing, and those are kind of the two big options that are out there for us. The committee really felt that Being a Writer and Making Meaning was a better route for us to take. The Lucy Hawkins is really dense. Although it provides the horizontal and vertical alignment, it's not as explicitly structured and easy, it's not as easy to facilitate for teachers. The other piece about Being a Writer and Making Meaning that is really powerful for our teachers and our students is that whole social-emotional component that the Being a Writer presentation the kids talked about, really teaching the kids how to work together, how to collaborate with each other, how to take feedback and work together. So, we really feel like the committee is recommending that we move forward with a purchase of Being a Writer and Making Meaning, K-4, with the professional development that is needed in order to implement this successfully. We've had, with Being a Writer this year, we had a half-day workshop-style PD for the fourth-grade teachers. We had a full-day workshop-style PD. And then, we had one lesson-study day, which is where you have a consultant from the company come in, model a lesson, work together with all the teachers. We're gonna have another one of those. And then, we also had a day for administrators to really look and do classroom walkthroughs so that they knew what they should be looking for as they work to support their teachers. So, this professional development will be key to the success of moving forward with Being a Writer and Making Meaning. And the other thing that the committee was also really clear on was that, in addition to the program that would allow us to meet the needs of kids' whole group and working independently, there's this component to balanced literacy of small-group instruction called Guided Reading, where we need leveled text. We need six-packs of books that will allow the teacher to sit with a small group of students. Everybody has a copy of the book in their hands. They're reading at an independent pace, and the teacher is allowed to, is able to support and guide them. So, we need some little bit of work in our leveled libraries to build up the number of texts that we have. So, in your packet, you'll see there's three components to what we're recommending, and that is the purchase of the materials for Being a Writer and Making Meaning. Then, there's a purchase for the ocopy leveled text, and that's to build those six-packs for our classroom libraries. And then, the third component is the professional development piece that is really crucial to making this work for our teachers and our students. One of the things that I really like about this company is not only are they committed, they call it a three-to-five-year commitment. If we're to move in this direction and purchase these programs, they want to be here to support us for three to five years. Not only with them coming in, but they have a wonderful online PD component, which allows the teachers to take online courses, one-on-one on their own, and then also for us to do facilitated work that's either delivered by myself or by the lead teachers at the three elementary schools. So, there is no perfect program out there that's gonna meet the needs of every student and every teacher, but the committee really feels like this Being a Writer and Making Meaning is perfect for Rockland right now, for where our teachers stand and for where our students are. So, I'm putting together that proposal for you guys, and hopefully...
Will the company provide any professional development for you without paying them?
Yes. So, one of the things about this company is it's a nonprofit organization. It's the Center for the Collaborative Classroom. So, they're not able to give as much free things away, but they will give you free PD. So, for example, we bought the two days of PD this year, and they gave us the third day for free.
Good.
So, I'm in the process, once we get the okay to move forward with this, that we will really build out a package from them that will give us a combination of days that we purchased and then days that they give us.
Right, because that's huge, the professional development. Without that, you're in the water, really.
Yes, absolutely. Any other questions?
Can I tell you, just want to take a moment to publicly acknowledge Karen and her work. One of the things you quickly learn when you become an administrator is that there's a great deal of literacy expertise at the elementary level. The vast majority of elementary teachers, I would say it's safe to say that their strength is literacy, that that's what they focus on. We have three principals who are all exceptionally well-educated around literacy instruction. And so, to be a person who is sort of leading this group, it's like, it can be a big, big challenge because you have a lot of experts in the room. And so, we've really been, we've really worked hard, and I say "we" because Karen and I have worked closely together, and I want to thank her for the work because she has a very, very difficult job. And we talk a lot about the word consensus because it's just a very, very important word, because no one is gonna have everything that you need. But to speak specifically to this program, the chart that shows the two missing pieces, there's absolutely no way I could justify recommending a $450,000 comprehensive literacy program when we have 70% of it already in place. And that's really, you know, the crux of the discussion. And it is very high quality.
It is.
So, anyway, I just wanted to throw that in.
Thank you.
Thank you indeed. Any other comments or questions from the committee?
I was just gonna say, you know, I did pick up on the social-emotional qualities in the Being a Writer, and so I do, even though I don't know much about this program yet, I'm excited that it's a complimentary program from the same place, and I'm hopeful that it will also kind of be a good all-around program.
Yes, absolutely.
I agree. I agree. And thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Thanks. It's been a great presentation. And I know literacy at our elementary level has been a real focus and a real priority of our district in the last year or so. And it's really exciting to see the sort of the framework by which we're doing that. And clearly, you're doing a great job at creating buy-in with everybody there, and I think that was a great point Dr. Cron made. But I think also the flip side of that is compliments to all the teachers that are there for being willing to buy in and being able to sort of check everyone's ego at the door and being able to listen and respect each other and understand that we're all rowing in the same direction on our initiative here. And really looking forward to seeing how it pays off. That's great.
Great.
Outstanding. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we need a vote on that tonight, Dr. Cron?
Yeah, I think we'd like a vote.
Okay, very good. That being said, we'd like the motion to approve.
Please.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much. That is a vote. That being said, we've already done our budget presentation. So, next up tonight, under item eight would be personnel information for the months of December and January. Dr. Cron?
Yes. There is a name on this list that it's probably gonna be hard for many to hear, but this is Ms. Susan Patton's final year in the Rockland Public Schools. And I believe the number is 29 years that she has spent. And I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a single person in the district who has come through the schools that wasn't in some way touched by her passion for kids and her passion for English, her love of Shakespeare. From what I understand, she was an amazing, amazing English teacher. When I met her, she was an administrator, and she and I instantly shared a bond. We have a passion for those kids who don't really get it right away, because I'm one of those. So, she and I were fast friends, and I'm so happy for her and for her husband Jim. But I just want to thank her personally for all that she's done for the Rockland Public Schools, and also personally for her friendship and mentorship. So, she will be retiring on the 30th of June.
Outstanding. Actually, I was gonna save this for my public comments, but since you chose to highlight Ms. Patton right now, I'm gonna just take a second as well to talk about it. Thursdays mainly, we get weekly updates that are so well put together. And then, one of them is a letter that Ms. Patton had wrote to the school committee, Dr. Cron, and Dr. Harrison announcing her retirement. And I just think that her letter really sums up a lot about Sue and what a great lady that she is and her husband Jim is. And, you know, certain people sort of make a place what they are, whether it be a town or an institution. And Sue and her husband Jim really have made Rockland Public Schools, and particularly Rockland High School, really what it is. So, I just want to share with you what Sue's letter was. So, bear with me for a minute. It was dated... It was dated January 13th, and it's to the members of the Rockland School Committee, Dr. Alan Kron and Dr. John Harrison. "It is with a mixture of excitement and heartbreak that I write this letter today. After 25 years as a teacher and administrator at Rockland High School, I will be retiring as of June 30, 2018. Although I know the time is right, I am having a difficult time thinking of my life without RHS. But then again, RHS will always stay with me, as I have always shaped by Rockland as much as I hope that I have helped shape the futures of Rockland's students. I have several highlights of my career that I would like to briefly relate to you. I am especially proud of my work in the classroom. My self-confidence soared when I first entered the classroom, and I knew I was relating with my students in a very special way. Their trust in me allowed me to become a better teacher than I have been, one who would trust back and push students to do their very best and to teach the whole child. Additionally, directing the Shakespeare Festival was always a highlight. Watching the outstanding performances of our students and the amazing commitment of our faculty participate in this event always brought joy, brought me joy and pride. I have also been fortunate to be part of the Rockland Adult Learning Center, Rockland Regional Adult Learning Center, for 22 years. The fact that Rockland can provide a high school diploma to students who have dropped out, or for those students who have come from around the world to live in Rockland, it is a unique service with only a handful of communities in the state having this type of program. However, at the end of my career, I was given the opportunity to direct and teach a new alternative program. In this position, I was able to really experience everything I have ever believed about teaching, that all kids can learn if given the right combination of instruction, expectations, compassion, and love. What an experience to see this program evolve into a safe haven and learning environment for some of Rockland's most deserving, yet reluctant learners. Thank you, Dr. Kron, for providing me with this incredibly rewarding way to end my career. Along the way, I have been so blessed to have had the best mentors and colleagues to work with and learn from. A special thanks to Scott McKinley for always calling me his breath of fresh air, and for Steve Sangster for telling Scott to hire me. I have also had two dear friends and colleagues who have since passed on, who have a special place in my heart. Judy Nasrallah, who taught me how much fun Shakespeare was, and Doric Scarpelli, my dear friend and colleague, who believed in me enough, teaching me in a summer program for at-risk students in 1993, to tell Steve that he had to find me a job. Of course, I would not have the husband I have today without Rockland High School, and he has made my life perfect. In closing, I do believe teachers touch the future and are part of the best profession there is. How perfect a life when you know that you can have done what you were meant to do and were happy and grateful to do every day that you were doing it. Thank you to the community of Rockland and to the Rockland School District for my career here. Sincerely, Susan R. Patton." I wanted to take the time to read that because I think it really sums Sue up from her own words and who she's been to this school and who she's been to this community. I've had the pleasure personally on working with Sue on the RAOF, the Rockland Regional Adult Learning Center, for the last several years, and actually along with Mr. Phelps as well. And to be able to see the second life that that program has been able to give a lot of adults in our community, that maybe for life for one reason, or whenever they took them in a certain direction and weren't able to get their high school diploma. Just the difference that Sue and all those that have taken part in that program have given those people and the gift they've given them of the future of education. You can't thank Sue and her husband, Jim, enough, and I just want to wish Sue the very, very best, and congratulations in retirement, and a very long, happy, and healthy retirement for both she and her husband, Jim. But with that, after that, the last item on our agenda tonight is personnel information. So we'll start with ladies first. We always start with our student representatives, the wonderful Ms. Macy Jones. Macy?
I don't really have much tonight. The high schools are getting their midterms. We're almost done. We have our last ones tomorrow. And we've all really enjoyed the new schedule, being able to come in at night. We found it's really made a difference in like being able to study, and then like being able to sleep in was definitely like a plus. It helps you concentrate. So yeah, that's about all I got.
Outstanding. Thank you, Macy.
Thank you.
Dr. Small?
I will, once again, make an impassioned plea for people to get their flu shots and to really give influenza the respect that it's due. It is a particularly bad year for influenza. The CDC released some statistics, I think just last week, that 30 children throughout the country have died so far this year from influenza. Influenza is not, you know, your typical cold, and so it really deserves the respect. And people, people should do what they can, so stay home when you're sick, get your flu shots, that's the most important thing that you can do. You can go to Rite Aid, Walgreens, CVS, your physician's office, anywhere, but it's really, really important. No, it doesn't prevent flu 100% of the time, but it does make a huge dent in reducing influenza-related hospitalizations, influenza-related complications, and influenza-related deaths. So please, please, please be healthy and get your flu shots.
Thank you very much, Dr. Small. Mr. Phelps?
It doesn't hurt. Doesn't hurt.
Was it a penny of prevention is worth a pound of something? I don't know.
It still doesn't hurt. I'm just saying.
If my, if my two-year-old can do it, you can do it.
I probably sound like a broken record, but get involved with your public schools. There's so much going on. I attended the other night Poetry Out Loud, where eight of our best participated in reciting poetry, actually competing against each other, who would think that there is such a thing, but there is, and they go on, the winners go on from this to regionals, and regionals go on to states, and the states go on to nationals. And I'll tell you, very impressive just to sit there in the lecture hall and watch these eight kids get up there and really, really do a phenomenal job. Then along with that, the athletics, we're blessed, you've got a hockey team in Rockland that is number two in the South Division III Sectionals. They're only, I think their, Hanover's the only town ahead of them, and I'm hoping they play Hanover again because I think it could be a different result. You've got basketball, two basketball teams, girls and boys. They're all in the top 10 of the South Sectional Division III. Your wrestling team is, is doing magnificent. They all have home and away games or matches. They're, it's a great take for five bucks and in some cases costs nothing. We have a swim team, too, that's a little bit harder to get to because I don't even know where some of these places are, but they're doing reasonably well and improving all the time. So there's a lot going on. We've got some Broadway productions coming up. We always have concerts coming along. Our music program is making leaps and bounds. That's something that takes time, but we have a very energetic head of our music department who's doing, I feel, a great job. The art department, we've got things coming along this spring with the, with the art presentation that we have every year. That's growing, becoming more diversified, if you will. So get involved in the Rockland Public Schools. There's a lot of very good stuff going on here. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Phelps. And I was on the theme of getting involved as well. Coming up very soon, our local town elections coming up this April. And I know it's the opportunity right now to go to the town clerk and be able to take out papers. I just want to share with everybody, one of the really great rewarding aspects of my life is sitting right here at this table and in the role as a school committee member, being able to work with our schools and Dr. Kron and our teachers and administrators to be a part of our kids' education. And our school department means a great deal to me and to be a part of our town and our community. And there's a great deal of ways to get involved in our community, whether it be with the schools, as Mr. Phelps just mentioned, or in a great many different ways, whether it be serving on the Board of Selectmen, or the Board of Health, or the town clerk, or whatever it might be. There's lots of different ways to get involved. Our selectman, Mr. Michael Loughlin, just very recently on Facebook, published a whole long list of all the different positions that are open coming up this particular year. And you hear so often on the streets about people asking, "How can I get involved?" There's a lot of great opportunities to get involved coming up. So I know we, I happen to have a lot of very talented, very bright, very smart neighbors here in Rockland, so we hope to encourage everybody to participate and to get involved and continue to take Rockland to the place that we all know it can be. With that being said, that's all I've got for tonight. And the last job of this committee tonight would be to have a vote to conclude tonight's meeting.
Did he skip it, though?
It wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Then I second it.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.